Call to order the April 14th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I'll recognize Councilmember George for our ceremonial opening.
Yes, I'd like to welcome especially tonight our French students that are here with us, and I'd like to give them a small welcome in French. Bonsoir et bienvenue surtout à nos invités. Ce soir, c'est un grand très plaisir d'acquérir dix étudiants et deux professeurs de lycée hôtelière de Lutecay. Nous sommes ravis qu'il soit avec nous à Cary. Cet échange entre Lutecay et la ville de Cary a eu début en 1992. Maintenant, c'est notre habitude de prêter leur somme à l'église, mais vous n'êtes pas obligés de participer. We're now going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three on our agenda, that's the adoption of the agenda, and I would entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations. It's item 2.1, and at this time, I'll recognize Mr. Smith, who will recognize our visiting culinary students from France.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like our special guests from France to join me at the podium. I'd like to invite Margot Note, Victoria Bonnet, Alexandre Dupré, Gueni Gelet, Carl Duhamel, Timothée Morellet, Jean-Flore Houbé, Swanee Denary, Julianne Breymont, Pierre Rick Engelhardt, and their chaperones, Marion Vapani and Maurice Roux. You all, just join me up here, please, along with our Sister City Chair and our French liaison.
Feel free to butcher his name, too.
Kind of hard to mess up Jack Smith, isn't it?
Good to look at them now. That's where the camera is. You've got to look this way, so there you go. You know, as a community, we are so blessed. We have such a diverse culture in Cary, and we have over 66 nationalities represented, and we're just a community that reaches out to all. And one of our most special investments is with our Sister City, which in Europe we call 20. And, you know, it's like dating. You have your first love. We have four Sister Cities, but our very first one was our French Sister City. And they've been around, I don't know about formerly, but they've been around since the late 80s, and on our first Sister City youth exchange, my daughter had the opportunity when she was 14, so I guess that was about two years ago, when she was 14, to go over to France, and it was one of her most memorable experiences. And again, people often develop the most lasting impressions of another culture through the face-to-face encounters. And today, we welcome these culinary students from our Sister City in Lutecay, France, and they are in Cary to study and hone their skills at some of our leading hotels and restaurants, including Haron's, At the Umstead, Prestonwood Country Club, and the Washington Duke Inn. This has been a longstanding exchange between the Lutecay Culinary School and the Wake Tech Culinary Arts Program, and it is the longest continuous exchange between Cary and any of our other Sister Cities. It's something we take so much pride in. And I'd like to have our, who's Jane or is it Barbara? Would you like to say a few words on?
Do we have any of the students who are going to speak?
Sure, sure. You're it. Okay, there you go. It's all here.
So, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jean-Flore, and I'm here to represent the Hospitality College in Lutecay in France and the students who are here for the same reason as me. We are very proud to discover another country and very grateful to people who are present every day and who greet us warmly. We arrived at the half of our internship here, and we have already learned a lot of things. Americans are always welcoming, kind, caring, and attentive. We want to thank our hotels and the city to welcome us for months. Finally, we thank the teachers to accompany us and for the involvement. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have to lower that a little bit. But just on behalf of Sister Cities, we welcome all of these students. This has been a longstanding and very successful exchange between Cary and Lake Tech and Lutecay. I do remember a couple of years ago when we had a delegation go over and visit them, and I think we lost track of how many courses we had at the dinner at the Culinary Arts School. Could have been 12, could have been 14, but it was a phenomenal evening, and it's the kind of thing that these students learn when they are over there. But I also want to thank Town Council for being supportive of all of our Sister Cities' work and endeavors. We wouldn't be here without your support, and our students had a chance to have their picture taken out by our new Sister Cities sign. So, as always, thank you for your support, and we look forward to working with you throughout this year, our 25th anniversary, and of course, Lazy Day's 40th anniversary.
Thank you, Barbara.
Before you leave, your being here is very, very special, and it's a relationship that I hope that will mean something to you. I've hosted many times, and the first student I ever hosted, we still are in contact, and my wife has visited her. We plan on spending our wedding anniversary next year in Lutecay. It'll be our 30th, and I've never been to Lutecay, so look out. I'm coming to Lutecay next year. So, thank you very much for being here and enjoy your time in Cary.
We're now at Agenda Item 2.2, and I'm going to recognize Budget Director Carl Knapp for the operational update, and we're going to be followed by some comments from our Assistant Town Manager Russ Overton. Mr. Knapp.
Good evening, Council. This will be brief. This is the update that you see before you of our projections for revenue in the General Fund. It's changed just a little bit from when we were here last month. We're projecting an almost 2.9% surplus in the budget, about 1.9% of total revenues. The areas that are different from the last time we spoke are twofold. One, the permits and fees line has been updated to take account of the new construction for the new SAS building. Fees for that have come in. And also, we received the second quarter distributions of the state-collected money, which gave us the opportunity to add a little bit more there for the utility franchise tax. Not as much as we were hoping we would be able to add based on the first quarter, but we do see about $200,000 extra there over what we showed last time. I'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Questions for Mr. Knapp. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council.
Mayor, just one other item. The accolades for Cary continue to roll in. I'd like to inform you that just this week, we were notified that we are the recipient of the Safe Wise 2016 Safest City Awards with a rank of number eight out of the top 20 cities in North Carolina. It should be noted that out of the top 20 cities, we were the largest municipality of any in the group. This type of accolades only reaffirm what we already know about our outstanding services by the police and the fire department, and also the commitments of these services by the Town Council. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Good news all the way around. We're going to move to our next item. It's item number three. It's Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the printed agenda, and if you'd like to speak at Public Speaks Out, I would ask that you sit in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing. As I said, there is a three-minute time limit, and to be fair to all of our speakers, I will strictly enforce the three-minute time limit. There's a green light on the timer on the podium, and when that turns to yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining, and when it turns to a flashing red, I will interrupt you, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a one-hour time limit for Public Speaks Out, and I thank everybody in the audience for respecting that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make comments from your seats, or anything else that may distract from the meeting. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone for Public Speaks Out? Going once, going twice. Okay, we're going to close Public Speaks Out, and we're going to go to our consent agenda. For the benefit of people watching on TV, I'm going to take a moment to review our consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all consent agenda items. We have on the consent agenda Minutes, Level GLLC Anexation, Continuation of Soccer Park Lease Agreement, Consideration of Bid Award for the 2016 Water Main Replacement Project. Would councilmembers like any of these items pull for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. A second?
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to public hearings. This is item five on your agenda. Same rule applies for public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Speakers now have five minutes for their comments instead of three. Our first public hearing is a repair of a zoning map error for 100 Shaloon Drive 16 REZ-09. Ms. Granton will introduce this item. We're going to open the public hearing, and Council may take action on this item this evening. Ms. Granton.
Thank you. Good evening. This is a request to correct a zoning error on approximately 1.73 acres located southeast of the intersection of Shaloon Drive and Bordeaux Drive. Subject property is developed with a large structure which appears to look like a residential dwelling, and that was a zoning condition associated with it when it was developed. The land use plan is office and institutional. The property was rezoned from Residential 30 to office and institutional conditional use in 1988. Had zoning conditions that called for a 100-foot buffer, described the residential appearance of the structure, limited the building height to two stories. There was a development plan in 1999 for a medical office building, and there was a special use granted in 1999 that allowed residential use in the office building. Sometime in 2003, the zoning was changed to Residential 20, which matched all the other residential zoning in that subdivision. From everything we could tell, that was an error. Staff sent a letter to the property owners letting them know their property would not be rezoned. We did not have any record of it being an official action, just got confused with all the residential property around it. So therefore, the proposal before you is to take it back to ONICU with all those zoning conditions that were put in place in 1988. We learned about this when the property owners, Mr. and Mrs. Vaughn, contacted staff and let us know that they were considering selling the property. That's when they discovered the discrepancy. They were not able to be here tonight, but asked staff to convey that this is in compliance with their wishes.
Thank you, Ms. Granton. Now's the time for the public hearing for 16 REZ-09, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions, comments, or motion.
Make a motion to approve 16 REZ-09.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We move to our next item, item 5.2, for Carpenter Village PDD Amendment, tract VC1, which is 16 REZ-02. Ms. Granton will once again introduce this item. We're going to open the public hearing. Council will not take action on this item tonight. Instead, we're going to refer to our Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation, and it will come back to Council at a future meeting. Ms. Granton.
Thank you. This is for approximately 10.23 acres, which is just a portion of the Carpenter Village PDD, the VC1 or the Village Core 1 tract. Property shown here highlighted in yellow on the south side of Morrisville Carpenter Road. And as you can see from this aerial view, there's a lot of infrastructure that has already been put in place and a number of existing non-residential buildings that have been developed. Property's been sitting vacant for those undeveloped portions for a number of years. There is some slight stream buffer impacts, which would be determined at the time of development plan review. There are no issues with Cary's Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Facilities Master Plan for residential use. There would be a recreation payment in lieu in accordance with the LDO requirements. Morrisville Carpenter Road is a major thoroughfare, and there is a future C-Trans route proposed along Davis Drive. The existing zoning is planned development district major, PDD major. As I mentioned, this is part of the Carpenter Village PDD, the subject properties highlighted in yellow. Currently approved uses for the Village Core tract are 106,000 square feet of commercial, and that included an 8,000-square-foot daycare facility, 46,000 square feet of office use. And then in 2003, there was a use approved or added to this tract for a retirement center. It was never really clarified exactly what was meant by a retirement center. Was it apartments? Was it a recreation site? It was not defined. So what the applicant has proposed now is to add 77 residential dwelling units as a maximum, and that would be a combination of between 23 and 24 townhomes, and then 48 attached residential dwellings that would be on the upper floors of commercial buildings. So what you see highlighted in the light blue color are existing buildings. There's an existing daycare building, which is actually a little over 9,000 square feet. There are existing commercial buildings in place. The applicant's proposing to remove that retirement center category, allow up to 27 townhomes, 48 detached residential or attached residential. And this is a sketch to show you the proposed setbacks and approximate configuration of the townhome development. It's consistent with what's been approved in other residential portions of the Carpenter Village PDD. So no major changes to the style of housing and some of the reductions to building setbacks that we've seen throughout the development. Other proposed changes would increase the commercial building height from three to four stories, and it would correct the actual size of the daycare center. The previous ordinance PDD stated it would be approximately 8,000 square feet. It's actually 9,841 square feet. So we would clean that up. There was a traffic impact analysis required, which did recommend improvements at several intersections. The applicant is going to speak to that and address the Council with their observations and concerns about why certain conditions haven't been offered beyond road improvements per the LDO. Property owners within 800 feet were notified by mail. Property was posted and advertised. Staff has had two phone calls on this. The only concern expressed was the increase in building height for the commercial. We may hear from some more citizens tonight, but to date, that's all that we've heard. So at this time, I'd like to turn this over to the applicant to address you, and then following the public hearing, I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Granton. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant forward for their comments.
Good evening, Mayor and members of Council. My name is Glenda Stopp with Glenda Stopp and Associates, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant for the proposed amendment. Ms. Granton did an excellent job explaining the proposed amendment, so I will try to be brief and go over some of the key points of the proposal and why we believe it does meet the criteria for approval of the rezoning. As staff pointed out, this proposal only affects a portion of the Carpenter Village PDD, which is the Village Core. It was approved for 105,000 square feet of commercial, 46,000 square feet of office, and as was pointed out, 65,000 square feet of retirement. Also, I do want to note that the 105,000 square feet that is currently listed on the document does include the daycare facility that is currently built. What this amendment does, it replaces the previously approved 65,000 square feet of area designated for a retirement center with residential uses. It would be up to 27 townhomes and up to 48 attached residential dwelling units. Want to point out that not only is the Village Core, of course, in the Carpenter Village PDD, but it's also located in the Carpenter Village Mixed-Used Overlay District. And because of that, we were required to submit a preliminary development plan, which is what you see on the screen before you. What that does depict, it shows you where the townhomes are located, and it also shows you the attached residential units that are located in the upper levels of the building that would contain either retail and/or office on the lower level. And looking at what's been built there today, it currently consists of 9,841 square feet of the daycare facility and roughly 32,300 square feet of office and commercial space, and that is what is out there today. The proposed amendment includes up to an additional 29,960 square feet of office and commercial that is left remaining to be built, and this would be for a total of 73,000 square feet of commercial and office, which is shown on the preliminary development plan. There is also one parcel there that could be either developed with townhomes or an additional 8,000 square feet of office or commercial, which would take the number of townhome units up to 27. With this amendment, we have also clarified uses that would not be permitted within the Village Core area. I think it's important to note that with this amendment, the intensity of the Village Core has been reduced, not quite as much commercial and office as being proposed, and we feel this is important, given the fact that it has taken quite a while for the Village Core to develop, and during this time, there has been, as you all know, residential development that has occurred in the area. So we feel that the intensity and the uses that are proposed are compatible with what's been built already. We also want to note that all the roads and infrastructure have been approved and built to meet the needs set out by the buildout of the southern section of the PDD. As staff pointed out, we will address, another person will address the traffic issue and why we have chosen to address those issues as we have. Want to end by just briefly discussing the purpose of a rezoning. The purpose of a rezoning is determining whether or not the land uses and density is allowed or appropriate for this site, and as part of that, also looking at whether or not the proposal is in compliance with the land use plan and the growth management plan, and the answer to those are yes. The current land use designation for this parcel is commercial and high-density residential, and these are the uses that are being proposed. And also, on those items in the staff report concerning the growth management plan, staff did acknowledge that we're in compliance. I want to close by saying that, as we know, Carpenter Village was approved in 1996, and I have to say, even for me back then, you know, one wondered for development of that type in that location, how successful it would be. And I think it's taken a while for the area to take off, and I think the Council needs to be commended in keeping that vision that was originally thought of for Carpenter Village in place. So basically, 20 years later, there is interest to develop a Village Core, and I know, although in some situations, people say it's hard to do residential on top of commercial, we actually have a developer here that is interested in doing that. So we believe that this proposal helps the original vision of Carpenter Village to be met. As staff pointed out, the site has been partially developed. It has been cleared. And in closing, by approving this rezoning, the residents of Carpenter Village will finally see this area developed and completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stopp. Now's the time for the public hearing for 16 REZ-02, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Thank you, Cary Town Council, for allowing me to speak tonight. There has been a proposal to change the zoning on a major piece of land.
Could you give us your name, please?
Oh, sorry. Alicia Gordon.
Thank you.
Do I get to restart my talk?
Yes.
It is my understanding that currently, stores with offices and condos above at two or three stories in height can be built. I don't have a problem with that, especially if the architecture agrees with what has already been built, a southern vernacular with a nod to Williamsburg's Merchant Square. I think everyone in Carpenter Village would like that area built out. Shops bustling, neighborhood children with an ice cream cone in their hand, that'd be great. Ideally, the buildings would be a mix of height and roof lines, something approachable and appearing to have grown over time, a true Village Core that would fit in the middle of a village. Let me point out that I dearly, dearly want shops to go into the core, so for me to speak up against this rezoning, our best hope in years, please know that I must really not like it. The requested rezoning, if passed, would allow the shops with condos above to be four stories tall instead of two or three, as well as allow townhouses to be built with no stores at all as their first floor. Both of these ideas would ruin the feel of the village shops and entrance to our subdivision. The whole tone of our neighborhood would be changed for the worse. First, let me concentrate on the request to allow the shops with condos above to grow to four stories tall. Did you know that one of these buildings, and there are four of these behemoths proposed, would be a mere 50 feet from current house? would be a mere 50 feet from current houses? In a Cary News article dated February 1st, Councilwoman Bush said that four stories next to a neighborhood was not going to work. And that was next to a neighborhood. This is in a neighborhood. Councilwoman Robinson said that four-to-five-story buildings are most appropriate in the eastern gateway area, near downtown, and at major intersections close to highway interchanges. Carpenter Village checks none of those boxes. This property does not even sit at the far back corner of the neighborhood, nestled against tall trees, or down in a valley to hide the proposed height. It is smack dab in the front center of Carpenter Village. Four stories does not fit the area in general, and certainly does not fit the feel of our neighborhood. And the builder better not say that they can make four stories pretty short, as that would mean just eight-feet-tall ceilings inside, which would not fit with what is currently built in our neighborhood. Well, I think that the talk tonight is more about rezoning than any aesthetics proposed so far. I wanted you to know that I think the condo building proposed resembles a giant fancy Days Inn, nothing like the current buildings, and certainly nothing like the renderings we were all shown 15 years ago with Williamsburg's Merchant Square as the stated inspiration. Where are the varied heights and the full brick? Why can't they just build more of what we already have, but one story taller? And what about garages for the condos? In overhead sketches shown in February, the garages took up a good portion of the first floor. If the shops with condos above have garages on the first floor, they don't entirely have shops on the first floor now, do they? This brings the proposal even further from the original idea of the village marketplace. They keep saying the first floor will be shops, but neglect to mention that half of that will be eaten up by garages. So now you have patrons having to walk all the way around the long fancy Days Inn to get to the stores from the parking lot. And who wants to sit at a cafe table on a nice wide sidewalk, eating their ice cream, looking into someone's garage? Oh, look, that guy's changing his oil. It's weird, and very far from what I'm sure anyone pictured. I haven't seen quaint gathering places on these renderings yet either, by the way. So four-story buildings of shops and garages with condos above don't make any sense for this area. What about the townhouses? Part of my problem with the townhouses is that they are just incongruous, unattractive townhouses plopped down in the middle of shops. Now, if they looked like Georgetown townhouses, say, or simply looked like varying-height saltbox houses stuck together, or like the shops condos should look, but with less glass on the front floor, I could see that blending in. But they should have either no garages or have garages that open to a hidden alley. The rendering shared with the residents shows spectacularly unimpressive townhouses with garages that take up half the first floor. They're very disappointing. These are not at all up to the standards we expect. The Town of Cary supports public-private partnerships, and I look forward to seeing what happens in downtown in the coming year or two. I just have to put this out there while I have this chance. Please consider the possibility that the town could buy the center area proposed to be rezoned as townhouses, and instead use it for the Western Wake Farmers Market, which has been meeting there since 2009. It would be such a shame to lose that gem to Morrisville. Now, the builder developer will probably plead that without that fourth story, they just can't afford the project. Well, then they need to pay less for the land, and charge more for the units, and build something more similar to what we have, or move on. Perhaps this builder is just not the one for the job. From even thinking to add four-story-tall buildings to our village core, to not understanding the creativity and quality that should go into this, I won't feel bad if they decide they can't build here at all, at any height. They don't get it, and that scares me. Can I ask my neighbors here tonight who agree with what I have said to please stand? And thank you to the town council for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Very well timed. Next speaker for this public hearing.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the council and mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'm Patrick O'Neil. I'm with a real estate company. We have the sales and marketing company for the developer, and would be very brief. The height that we're requesting is necessary, and certainly we understand residents having questions, concern about it, but necessary in order for the project to be affordable. After 20 years of having the vacant land there, the rest of the community seems to be very encouraged by finally having a product design that will fit the need. We are limited, as you all know, of the amount of retail that we can have, and at the same time needing the parking requirements, so the garages are needed and do take up space. But even if they were not there, the amount of retail that is called for in the community, we could not fill all those first four spaces to begin with. We really wanted to comply with the plan for Carpenter Village. Developer has worked closely with the developers at Carpenter Village in designing a product that would really match and blend in with the community. We do ask for that opportunity to make it a project that will really be financially successful for the community as well as for the developer. As far as the apartments, if you look at that next door on the front part of Carpenter Village as well, with the high-pitched roofs that they have, the tops of these buildings are very similar in the height that is there because of the high pitch on the apartment buildings. These are very attractive design. They conform with, we've also met with the HOA. We went to the, as well, to the annual meeting of the homeowners and talked with them there. So it's been a real open approach that the developers have wanted, to make something that would really work well for Carpenter Village and complete the vacant spot that's been there for 20 years now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker for this public hearing. Anyone else for this public hearing?
My name is Alita Jordan. I live at Pontiac, I'm sorry, I live at Potomac Grove Place, so I'm right in front of the area. And I think the lady that just spoke earlier, I think her name was Ms. Glenda Trump, did an excellent job of outlining many of the concerns that I have. I just wanted to point out a couple. First of all, the traffic. Right now, there's a lot of traffic on Potomac Grove Place, even with the limited amount of commercials. So with more commercial, that's going to be even worse, and that will take away a lot from the aesthetics of the whole environment. Second, when I came here about a month ago, they talked about this being a high-density area, and what I can see, it will be truly high-density in terms of the fact that there will be so many buildings crowded in such a small area. And as mentioned before, there's not only the garage there and the retail, but there's also all of the customers coming to the retail. Where are they going to park? It's just going to be so congested, even as we think about the whole traffic of not only Potomac Grove Place, but Morrisville Carpenter Road as well. I am very concerned about the height of the buildings. Four stories is just too high. Again, I think the young lady that came up here earlier did an excellent job of describing why that would be just deplorable for the people that do currently live in that area. I think it's also important to note that there are some commercial areas already located there that are vacant. So as we think about building more commercial area, we are not even able to fill the area that we have now. So I think those are some of my major issues that I wanted to bring up, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker for this public hearing. Thank you. The people upstairs would be very happy that you're speaking out of that one.
Good evening, council. My name's Don Sever. I'm project manager for E.J. Kalis and Associates, and I'd like to talk about the traffic impact study and the reason that we're not doing any proposed recommendations or proposed improvements for the project. The overall traffic impact study was required because the previous traffic impact study was done more than 10 years ago, and to meet the new criteria, we had to do it again. The surface area that the intersection, the studied area included a total of 15 intersections within one mile of the overall PUD. We are very surprised at the limits of that because, as staff previously pointed out, this is a 10-acre parcel, and some of the intersections that were studied went out as far as Davis Drive and McCrimmon Parkway, and as far west as NC-55 and Morrisville Parkway. So it was quite a large area. With the 2020 background traffic, a total of 12 other projects were included. We looked at the total ADT that was being generated by this project, and on page four of the staff report, it's stated that for the townhomes and the general retail for the project, for the peak hour, a total of 100 peak-hour vehicles per hour were being generated, and for the PM peak hour, 300 total cars were being added. When you look at the total 12 background traffic, the other 13 potential developments included in the report, the total for the ADT PM peak there was 3,400 cars, and for the PM peak was a total of 5,000 cars. So from a percentage standpoint, this project was only being, for the PM peak, a total of 5%, and for the AM peak, a 3%. For the overall, when these recommendations were presented, what was stated was for us to consider these. And it was very confusing, and we talked to Mr. Jerry Jensen about that, and he thought it was poorly worded as well. So when we interpreted, because of the word "consider," we looked at it, and with our percent of 3% and 5%, that these recommendations really weren't valid in this particular situation because we're just doing the infill. So that was the reason that we're not proposing any proposed improvements at this particular time.
Next speaker for this public hearing.
Mayor, council members, my name is Mike Hunter. I'm one of the original developers. Councilmember Smith may remember that over 20 years ago, I stood at the podium, the old podium. I was, needless to say, a lot thinner and had a little more hair, not quite as gray and not quite as tired as we are. This has been a long journey for us. We had a vision with the town, close to 25 years ago. We were one of the first in the country to try to do what is now called the neo-traditional design, the TND. I recall being down at Charleston for a charrette. Had to learn that word. And out of about 1,000 people, there were five developers down there, I being one of them, and the other four were sitting next to me. And they were trying to talk about what we should do, and how we design, and how we ensure the totality of success of this type of project. Well, fast forward, those other four gentlemen were from Disney, who developed celebrations, and they were asking me questions. We had a great vision. We believed in the village core. We believe we've had great success with Carpenter Village otherwise. We brought you a school. We brought you the number-one library in the state in terms of volume. Brought you many positive things. But our one Achilles' heel has been the village core. We have gone through a great number of suitors to finish it out. Each one has not been able to get to the finish line. Myself and my partners own the buildings out there. Unfortunately, financially, they have not been anywhere near a success. I did hear a comment about the first-floor retail. I will tell you that now, today, we have a waiting list for our first floor, and the only vacancies we do have are on the second floors. We're not proposing to do any second floors. We are limited because of the original vision in terms of the retail and the office design. The smaller types of buildings are not conducive for elevators, and that limits us. They're not conducive in terms of having multiple accesses on the second floor. That limits us in terms of assembly. I could go on and on and on. I'm not here to make excuses. I'm here to explain to you our situation. We believe we finally found a company, Mr. O'Neil was speaking about, that can help us finish our vision and do it in keeping with what the original concept was. Yes, there are changes. Quite frankly, I think the changes are to the positive. Glenda Stopp was trying to explain to you that we are currently zoned for almost 170,000 square feet of retail and office. We're talking about maxing that out now at 70,000 square feet. The units that they're proposing to build are going to be elevated, so the customer base, in most likelihood, is going to be an empty nester type. And that includes the townhomes. Let me be very clear, I don't want to misspeak. The townhomes are going to be available for elevators, will be built with shafts to accommodate elevators. The condominiums, I know we call them something else now, but I call them condominiums above the retail. Obviously, they will have elevators. So the design is certainly that which will cater to a senior living or retiree empty nester type, which is a perfect complement for Carpenter Village. We have a number of free-generation families out there. What a perfect place for retirees, grandparents, or those that just want something to scale down to. We're also going to be able to finally push the remainder of the retail space and hopefully have some more retail companies that will cater to the neighborhood. The concern about the height, I will take exception to. We have single-story, we have two-story, we have three-story apartments, we have multi-story housing. It actually is perfect in keeping with the design of different heights. The architecture, I truly believe, if you've seen some of the preliminary designs, is exceptional for what we already have out there, and it clearly ties back in with it. This is one opportunity for us to move forward. And although we have enjoyed having the farmers market out there...
I'm sorry to have to interrupt you.
It's not a permanent place for them. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker for this public hearing. Anyone else for this public hearing? I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions and comments. I do have questions for Ms. Granton. There's talk about sketches presented to residents, et cetera. Has anything been offered with this rezoning, or is that all just conceptual?
That is conceptual. So there were a number of things that were discussed, and I'm glad you asked, a point of clarification. There is no age restriction on these dwellings, so while it may be the intention and the marketing goal, these are not age-restricted dwellings. Also, Mr. Hunter asked what we refer to it now. It is attached residential. We don't say apartments or condominiums because we can't by a zoning condition control ownership. So it would be attached residential. There are some little details in the PDD document that talk about some accents with the buildings, and there are some LDO standards for architectural guidelines which apply throughout Cary, but nothing, you know, specific to this development yet. And that's something that the applicant can certainly work with staff on if they choose to offer those conditions.
So in a rezoning, you usually don't see a lot of siding of buildings and specifics about height?
Well, yes, height, especially with a PDD, certainly.
Right. So explain how much of that is enforceable.
Anything that is put in, you know, writing and offered voluntarily by the applicant could certainly be enforceable if it's going to be something that shows up on a development plan. We certainly can't control ownership.
So the location of these buildings is enforceable?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just want to make sure everybody was understanding. My comments were, I hear the residents and their concerns, and I also heard that they would like to see something built there. built there. And so that, I think, is a great starting point. And I know there's been some conversations and I hope those conversations continue because when you've got two parties that want to work together, which it sounds like they do, then maybe we can come up with a solution that's a win-win for all. There's there's distance between them, but I don't think it can't be overcome. I know that's a little negative, but I think there's potential there. Ms. Robinson, that's your area. So.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm excited to see this Village Corps finished out. My primary question is, what is the height of the three-story apartments that are, I guess, to the west of this? And I'd like to see if staff could get us that information and help us understand how the height of this proposed building compares to that. I think that may be relevant and perhaps this applicant can revise the design in some way to be compatible with what's already out there.
I'd just like to follow up on that. Given what could be built here today, commercial, the office, the retirement community, was there any limits on the height of those structures?
Yes. Yes, it was three stories previously.
To three?
Correct.
Okay, that's helpful. I would agree with Ms. Robinson's comments and the mayor's especially. The use doesn't bother me at all. There's a gap there between the residents and the applicant, but I think if they both work together, then they can, you know, probably come up with something there, but both sides can be satisfied with.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
I think one element that is a success in Carpenter Village is the fact that the homes do not look like they are really a car-driven community. I remember when we visited Franklin, Tennessee, they talked about, you know, not having the houses fronted with driveways and whatnot. And a lot of the homes in Carpenter Village, it doesn't seem like there, you know, there's a lot of garage doors as prominent features. And I think that's one thing that the residents are responding to is those garage doors. And I don't know if there's anything that can be done in the design such that the fronts of the buildings are not consumed with a garage. So it's something to consider, but I think that that may be one of the reasons why people are kind of recoiling.
And I was thinking exactly that when the resident was talking about sitting outside and looking at a garage. They're exactly right. Not what you want to see.
Yeah.
I'm glad you brought up the aesthetics. I was going to mention that as well, that from a harmony perspective, which we tend to use that word all the time, that a community should be in harmony with its neighbors. And I hadn't seen those concept drawings. I didn't notice it in the staff report. So.
They are not part of the applicant's submittal.
Right. So I didn't get that that all the residents were reacting to. That was the first thing I noticed is that they didn't look like the rest of Carpenter Village. And the one thing about Carpenter Village is you can't just say it looks like Carpenter Village because it's very eclectic. I mean, that's what I like about Carpenter Village. When you're on the Charleston row houses, it looks one way. You're in the back where the, you know, some of the larger estate homes and then the apartments. So it doesn't have to be cookie cutter to look like it. It just needs, like you said, some of the key elements and appearance elements that are put into this design. So if the developer is willing to work with that, since the original developer is here, I think that that could make this a much more appealing view to the rest of the residents.
Other comments, questions?
So I understand then with the conditions, if there's, people don't want the four stories, but we hear there's a mix, then you're saying there can be conditions put forward in a development that would say this next to that or no more than two, four stories next to each other. They could, there could be conditions that could be put in that would be enforceable about the heights of the buildings and eclectic or high and low next to each other. All that could be enforced.
Yes, because this requires a preliminary development plan. The layout that you see before you shows the type of building where it would be and the applicant can specify the height limitations. So yes, you can.
And the variety even within one building. Even variety within one building could be enforced.
In terms of.
Like townhouses could be two-story next to a three-story, next to a four, they, next to another two or a one, they could, they could be.
You could, yes, you could, you could get to that, that level.
Okay.
We always try to look at making sure that zoning conditions are not so complex that something's going to get missed at the time of review. But we want to make sure it's very straightforward. But yes, you can get very specific.
In light of seeing these pictures is what I was thinking about, that there could be things that would be specified. Okay.
Other questions or comments? We're going to send this to our planning and zoning board for their recommendation for those that are attending or watching. If there are any changes between now and the time that our planning and zoning board reviews this, then there will be a public hearing at the planning and zoning board, which will give you an opportunity to speak again, especially on those changes. They will make a recommendation and depending on whether there are changes between now and that time, will also determine the time it comes back to us. Usually, it's about two months if there are no changes and if there are changes, it will be longer. Telling you just so that you're aware, if you have any questions, please contact us and we'll be glad to give you any information that you need. And again, I urge everyone to work together and see if we can get this where it's a win-win for everybody. And I thank all of you for attending. Thank you, Ms. Grant.
Thank you.
We're going to move now to our next item. It's item 5.3. It's the Land Development Ordinance Amendments. And Ms. Spearman of our staff will present this item. We're going to open up a public hearing. We will not take action on this item. Instead, we're going to refer to our planning and zoning board for their recommendation and it'll come back to us at a future meeting. Ms. Spearman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight are the round 34 amendments to the land development ordinance. And tonight is the public hearing. These items could potentially come back to you for a decision on July 25. There are six items in this round and I'll briefly summarize each of them. Background information and the specifics of the proposed text is provided in your staff report. Item A relates to development plan and plant approval processes. There are a number of individual changes in this item that seek to clarify and simplify the development plan and the plant approval process and provide more consistent wording throughout the LDO. As I mentioned, the specific changes are listed and bulleted in your staff report. I would add, there is one additional change we would like to add to this list, and this is a change that would enable us to better address certain types of revisions to site plans that would have a very minimal impact. In this case, we want to make sure that we're ensuring that the LDO requirements that we have are always commensurate with the scale and the impact of a project so that, for example, we're not having instances where a very small development triggers an impact or some kind of requirement that is much beyond the scale of the development impact itself. And this additional item will be developed with specific text prior to the planning and zoning board meeting. So that will come back to you as an additional detail. Second item we have is related to telecommunication facilities. And this would clarify and begin to update our ordinances regarding telecommun- additional communication facilities that we're seeing that would be located within road rights of way. Third item relates to champion trees. In this, we would specify that sweet gum trees would not be considered champion trees regardless of their size.
Yes, I'm so happy about that.
Item D relates to the thoroughfare overlay district. With this change, we would continue to apply 100-foot thoroughfare corridor buffer width to fully controlled access highways, which include US 1, I-40, I-440, and NC 540. It would reduce the width of the buffer to 50 feet for residential development and 30 feet for non-residential development along limited control access highways. And these include Carytown Boulevard and US 64. And would also administer these requirements as a highway corridor buffer and eliminate the thoroughfare corridor overlay zoning district. Would point out that the specific requirements that are currently in the corridor overlay district that apply to the true fully-controlled access freeway segments of road would continue to apply just in the context of a buffer. Item E relates to largely to changes within the Office Research and Development District. This item affects several sections within the LDO and would modify uses allowed in the ORD district to eliminate some uses while allowing other uses to be developed without current limitations that we have related to the size of a master plan or the percentage of the building used, the percentage of a building that a particular use occupies. These standards were originally intended to allow a limited amount of certain types of developments, such as restaurants and gas stations. It could be a support type use in larger developments. And over time, we've found that this has actually been applied more through the Plan Development District with Weston as an example. So we're trying to clean up that part of the ordinance to make that more workable for us. There are also some related changes in this section that would clarify some definitions and requirements related to personal services and certain recreation type uses. I would like to point out a correction in this area in the to the definition, to the proposed definition of commercial indoor and outdoor recreation facilities. We, there is some strike-through language in this area as it takes out the word courts and pools as an example in that definition. And we do intend to maintain those terms as an example. So we will clean that up as it goes forward to planning and zoning. And finally, there are a number of technical and minor amendments. And again, these are bulleted in your staff report and will be available for any specific questions about those. And that concludes staff's presentation. And following the public hearing will be available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Spearman. Now it's time for the public hearing for round 34 Land Development Ordinance Amendments. And I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak on this at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions, comments?
Happy for Lori.
I feel sorry for those.
Don't even speak for the trees. Morax.
I'm sorry. I'm going to speak for the, not for the trees, for the tree, for the sweet gum tree.
Go ahead.
I'm in opposition of the, to the champion tree amendment. Yes, those pods are annoying. Those fruit pods are annoying. Someone promised to put one on my chair tonight when I got here.
Look at this.
I've got gummy balls for you from a sweet gum tree.
Thank you. Look at this.
In my neighbor's yard.
Thank you. That was who promised to put one on my chair, but I guess you had.
Beat you to it.
They are annoying. There's no question about it to the, to us, especially if you're in the backyard and have to mow over them. No question about it. But I believe the tree has other benefits and we shouldn't be penalizing the tree for this one thing. It's an excellent canopy tree. I think that's what we want in a champion tree. It's a great tree for the nesting of birds and habitat for wildlife. And actually, even the pods contain dozens of seeds that are eaten by birds and squirrels and chipmunks and so on and so forth. Yes, the pods are annoying.
[laughing]
But it almost started, I think, as somewhat of a.
No, it was never a joke for me.
To start with.
If you have one in your yard, it's never a joke.
I cut all mine down. I'm sorry.
We've been a Tree City USA award winner for 30-some-odd years now. And I really think we should be proud of the way we preserve our trees. And we shouldn't be doing anything to weaken our ordinance at this point. So just want you to consider that. Think of the whole thing as this moves forward through PNC and comes back to us.
Let me just make a counterargument just to put it out there. But when this ordinance, when I first started talking about sweet gums, and I do have one in my yard, and I do pay or have paid my children a lot of money to pick up the little bolly guys. When I first started talking about this, I thought it was just me that was having this issue. Then I started talking to some of the golf courses who have to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars to inject the ground around the trees in order so that they don't produce fruit, so that they don't have the huge maintenance costs and an equipment cost that are, that they have to pick them up. But the problem that I have is we're not the only ones having this problem. I've found 15 cities across the US who have labeled the sweet gum a nuisance tree and are taking them down and actually putting an ordinance in. I'm not saying that we should take them all down. I'm actually saying that if there's a champion tree that a developer says is in its way, that the sweet gum, and it's a sweet gum, it doesn't qualify as a champion tree. They want to keep any tree that's on their property. That's fine. But this is actually being labeled a nuisance tree by multiple cities and towns across the US. It's causing huge problems for municipalities and all the problems that these, I don't know, gummy balls is that the official word it's causing. So and it's not a tree that's endangered. So as a member of the EAB, I'm, I actually brought this up at the EAB and asked folks a lot. And there was a mixed reaction, right? Because we're all tree-loving people. We're all tree huggers on the EAB. And it's just one of those hard things that, that we have to do. And I'm not opposed to removing it as a champion tree. And the developer always has the right to decide, I'd like to keep this tree. But if he wants it removed, I say let him.
I may have found most of those 15 cities myself in doing some Googling. I was surprised I found them. But that also means that there are tens of thousands of cities who have not labeled.
They're on the way. We can look later.
Any comments about any other items that we're considering for amendments?
I guess it's a technical thing. I'm trying to, when, when you list an F, commercial indoor recreation facility, and you put all swimming pools, hot tubs, and spas, you mean spas in the sense of, what do you mean spas? Because there's spas where there's a bubbling hot water and then there's spas where you just get your nails done or whatever. What do you mean? That's the clarity thing. I was trying to figure out what that means.
That would be more of a hot tub in that context.
So I add that question because I don't know that, I mean, it was nestled with the swimming pools and the hot tubs. So that's what I thought. But, but then there's all sorts of spas that aren't, that aren't.
We can take a look at that language for clarification.
Because I think somebody may say, oh, it's a nail spa or it's a whatever spa. And, and that shouldn't be thrown in with the hot tubs and the pools is what I'm thinking.
No, the nail spas would be captured under a personal service category for.
But this says all.
Okay.
You know, that's what I'm saying. It may have just made some clarification. That was the only other question I had that came up.
Anything else from council?
Change spas to hot bubbling things.
Hot tub.
All right. This will go to our planning and zoning board for their recommendations. I can't wait to hear what they say. Oh, gummy balls. And it will come back to us at a future date. Thank you, Ms. Spearman.
We will.
We now move to discussion items. Our first discussion item is item 6.1, Fiscal Year 2017 Community Development. Block Grant Annual Action Plan Funding Recommendations. Mr. Smith will present the item and council may take action. Mr. Smith.
Good evening, council. For those that have been on the council a while, this should be a familiar process. Because this is the 13th year that we've received community development block grants. We've received $5.9 million so far, plus the $1.4 million loan that we provided for Maitland Inn. Community development block grants are very flexible. We can use them for housing, economic development, water and sewer improvements, sidewalks, public services, any number of activities. But the one requirement is they must benefit low and moderate income families. And to receive these funds, we have to prepare an annual action plan each year telling HUD how we're going to use these funds. And so that's the process we're in now. HUD has notified us that we're going to receive $556,679. This is the largest grant that we've received in the 13 years. We are bringing forward reprogrammed funds from previous years that was unspent of $15,000. And the Maitland Inn, sometime during the next fiscal year, will start repaying that loan that we provided to them. And we have projected $79,630 in program income. We've also asked through the capital improvement process for $250,000 in general funds. That would be contingent upon your approval of the capital improvement budget later this year. So in total, we have $901,000, a little over to spend. We conducted a RFP process to solicit proposals for those funds. We conducted a RFP process to solicit proposals for those funds, and unfortunately, we received 2.1 million dollars in requests, so over two times what we have available. So we had to have a very difficult decision on how to spend these funds. Under affordable housing, we have three programs for housing rehab, the towns program, plus resources for seniors, and rebuilding together. Habitat for Humanity has asked for some money to buy a five, five-acre lot on Trimble Avenue, on which they will be able to construct 28 townhomes. We were unable to fund a 11-unit apartment complex for homeless veterans, and also a request from Life Transition, which formerly hospice. Under economic development, we are asking through the capital improvement budget for $75,000 for the downtown facade program, and just like the Macon Inn will be paying us back, we have to pay HUD back for that 6108 loan starting this year, which would be around $74,000. Public facilities, we're helping White Oak Foundation build a community resources center, and Dorcas Ministries has asked for money to acquire some of the property around them to improve their facility, and we've been working with them on, since that's a gateway to Cary, that we discussed in earlier at the work session, we'd like to see some improvement at that shopping center on High House Road. Public services, White Oak Foundation provides food programs and job training and transportation for seniors. We're also proposing to fund a transition life care palliative care program. They will be able to expand services to terminally ill, inugent persons with these, these funds. And then we have the usual administration and minimum housing support and a small amount for contingencies. The next steps is, if you approve these recommendations tonight, we will incorporate them into the annual action plan document, and you're currently scheduled to approve that document on April 28th, and we must submit the annual action plan to HUD by May 15th, and then funds will be available at the beginning of the fiscal year. So we recommend that you approve our proposal.
Questions for Mr. Smith, comments?
I have a question. So if the council, I mean, we're coming into a very tight budget year, if the council did not want to appropriate, what was it, 250,000 from the general government capital request, what would happen? Like, what would, where would you decrease this project list?
Okay, those funds have been requested for the towns housing rehab program. We've requested funds for the facade program, downtown facade program, and we requested support for the minimum housing in case we have to do some demolitions of dilapidated structures throughout minimum housing program.
Okay, so that's 100,000, what about the other one?
150 for rehab, 75 for facade program.
Oh, I see, okay.
And 25 for...
I see, housing, okay, 150 for rehab, 75 for facade, and then 20...
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, 25 for the minimum housing support.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Do you have any comments about this? I mean, as you guys are preparing the budget?
That, that's in, as Mr. Smith has said, that's kind of in the budget as the proposal. It's certainly available if council wants to discuss it, otherwise, we could do that at a work session.
Removing that funding removes funding from some of the things I care about the most. If it was going to remove it from some of the other items on the list, I'd be more inclined to talk about it.
What are the things that you care about the most, facade improvement program?
The rehab is first and foremost.
Okay.
The facade improvement program, I think, is valuable. The rest is, what, 20 grand for something, something?
Minimum housing.
Minimum housing support, yeah, you know.
It's just very...
But I don't want to sit here at the table and play...
Well, that's the problem.
It's not important to me, and it might be important to somebody, you know, kind of thing, so.
Yeah, and what I would say is, is difficult for us, I understand your timeline, because you have to get this in by May 15th, we're not going to have the budget approved by then.
That's correct.
So that puts you in a really awkward position. It's tricky for us because any, you guys could come to us and ask for 250,000 out of the budget every single Thursday, and we'd be like, yeah, that's the highest priority. You know, build that sidewalk, we've had that housing, every week, because we're considering it in isolation, and it's really tricky when we're not looking at it in comparison to every other demand that we have. And that's the, the beauty of taking up these things during the budget. So if we go ahead and approve this tonight, are we tangentially committing ourselves to that 250, or is it still open for discussion? And if it, in the grand scheme of things, if we find out this isn't the highest priority, we can back out of that?
That's correct.
Okay.
We don't have to spend it.
It's, well, it's contingent upon the budget adoption.
Okay, so it's kind of like a plan that we submit, and then we have the ability to not pursue the plan to its fullest extent.
Right.
Is that, is that also true with the CDBG? So when you make the application for the CDBG, do you also tell them that the town is putting in this amount of money, and that then leverages the likelihood that we'll get more CDBG grant?
HUD likes to see the local governments leverage the CDBG funds, and so we do include that to help with that process, but you would not be obligated to fund those programs if you didn't, if you didn't approve the budget. We will still get our grant, we'll still get our 556,000, but we, we'd have to either not do those things that we are asking for general funding for, or we'd have to drop another program.
Okay. I think all the projects are worthy, it's just it's hard to decide it, how, if they're worthy in light of everything else that is worthy.
Now, one of the things that speaks to me, as you probably will guess, is that it's very difficult and very expensive to live in the town of Cary, and our commitment to finding and creating a diversity of housing stock so that anyone who wants to can afford to live here is important, especially, as you mentioned, the people who are, have been here for years and years and years and need some help in fixing up their homes. So each one of these, as you said, is absolutely worthy, but I think one of the things that this shows is our commitment to all the citizens of Cary, and I really would like to see us move forward with this exact plan, and I'll make that actually in the form of a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second further discussion?
Yeah, just a little bit. When these groups come in, I mean, as you said, Jennifer, they're all worthy, and how do you, how do you deal with it? And we, and you apply, you know, a variety of factors. Now, when I look at the, the veteran homeless, you know, in, in my study, I don't see any support from the state, I don't see any support from the feds, and it is a growing problem. Homelesses, you know, we, we talked about just, you know, a storage unit the other day off of Maynard Drive, and one of the things is, there were homeless back there, you know. I mean, it is a problem that is emerging, and, you know, do we, do we coach any of these folks about, you know, working with some of the existing organizations, you know, that we do support? I mean, you know, I'm not, I'm not challenging the recommendation because we have such, such little funding, and we want to be as impactful as we can, but there's a part of me that says, you know, what can we do to this growing, well, maybe it's not as big growing a problem as I think, but, you know, the homeless is there, and, you know, the fact that there are groups now trying to help those veterans that are homeless, I'm just at a loss, you know. I, I mean, when they come to you, are there other resources you can, like, send them to?
Yes, sir, I'm glad you asked that question. We have, I've been working with that picket applicant on that project, and I do think we can link him up with some other nonprofits that are, that are in the business, and there are other sources of funds that I think we can bring to bear.
It may better serve that initiative that he's trying to...
Yes, yes.
Okay.
We're definitely committed. Veterans housing is one thing that we've not done in Cary to date, and so I'm definitely interested in trying to get that project off the ground.
Okay, other questions?
I appreciate Ms. Robinson's comments and questions, and, you know, is this the time to, you know, dip into that general fund and increase the funding for affordable housing? I share her in the thinking that all of these are worthy projects, but some are more worthy than others. I tend to really support those programs that provide a hand up, not a handout. I think there are definitely some on this list that we've worked with in the past and have gotten good results from, have gotten good bang for the buck. But I, I really share those concerns. I mean, it's, you know, budget years always seem to be, or budgets always seem to be tighter and tighter, and, you know. I'm hoping that we can really look at this again, maybe when we go through the budget process.
Other questions or comments? We have a motion on the table to approve this staff recommendation. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, council.
We now move to item 6.2, Consideration of Appropriating Funds to Install Safety Netting at USA Baseball National Training Facility. Mr. McRaney will present the item, and council may take action. Mr. McRaney.
Trying to push the slide ahead, but, there we go. Good evening, council. This is a request for funding to install safety netting at the Bill Coleman Stadium Field at USA Baseball. In light of a number of injuries over the past few years at major league fields, US, Major League Baseball has made it a priority, along with themselves and their partners, which USA Baseball is, to make it a priority to install netting at all the fields. In fact, Durham Bulls Stadium, or Durham Bulls opened up their season last week, and they, they themselves have extended their, the netting along the both, the first and third base sides. We installed netting at the three practice fields in the rear of USA Baseball and had hoped to do this, obviously, in the very near future. USA Baseball came to us, given the priority for them, they offered to cover half the cost. Total cost of the project is 60,000, of which USA Baseball would pay 30. Now, answer any questions that you might have.
Questions, comments, motion?
The length of, what's the length of time this netting's going to last? So we'll come back, how many years to get this much more?
Oh, I would say at least a decade. I mean, we've had the current netting in since 2007, and, and it's been fine.
So this is replacing existing netting, or...
No, it's, it's to extend, it's to extend further.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion, a second, and a second. Discussion.
Just real quick, I thought of something, is there a reason why we're getting this now and not through the budget process? Because we've all keep on saying, oh, God, we could weigh this with other things.
They very much would like it in before their season starts, which starts Memorial Day, and so it's going to take us, in fact, they're going to, they will cover the cost of the installation if council approves it, you know, starting tomorrow after, you know, if, if council were to approve it tonight, and that couldn't occur if we were to wait for the budget, which obviously would occur in late June. So their season runs from Memorial Day to Labor Day, and so that's why, it's, that's why this is outside of the process.
So this is a late-breaking requirement?
Yeah, they, yeah, they came to us in the past six weeks, basically said, this is just a major issue for them.
Thank you.
Lawsuit, happy world.
Well, yeah, I mean, what's the cost of a lawsuit if someone's injured?
That's part of it.
Car exceeds for 30,000.
Yes.
Cost to the person injured.
It costs you for...
Other comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
We may need to...
Thank you, Mr. McRaney.
Thank you.
We now move to our third discussion item, is the new regional branding design for paratransit vehicles in service with effective date of October 1st. Ms. Boilston will present the item, and we may take action, Mr. Wilson.
Good evening, mayor and council members. As you may recall, about a year and a half ago, October 30th, the council approved a change of our brand from C-Trans to Go Cary. That was specifically for our fixed route vehicles and services at that time, and that was, and that's with the schedule being effective October 1, 2016. But at that time, there had not been a paratransit branding along with that, and since that time recently, that has been developed with two options, and we had indicated in the previous staff report that we'd be coming back, and that's why we're here today. And as you recall, this, this is the brand that was approved for our fixed route services, the Go Cary brand. It retains our C-Trans blue as the dominant color along the top and green that we also had in our previous brand. The paratransit brand, looking at two options, one of them is a Go Cary Access, and this is what that would look like on what we call a LTV, is a light transit vehicle, of which we will have in our new contract beginning October 1, two of these in our paratransit or door-to-door service, as well as 16 of these vehicles here. This is a MV1-type vehicle. We're eliminating all lifts in our new fleet, which will increase loading, boarding, and improve on-time performance. This is the other brand, this is the staff-recommended brand to retain our door-to-door underneath the Go Cary new branding, and that's the look on the LTV as well as the MV1. And so the styles of both options of, although they're different in terms of the base color, the dominant color being really grayish silver on the fixed route to the white on the paratransit, I'd just like to remind council that over the 10 years that we've run fixed route service, I've had a number of calls where passengers have been at bus stops and claimed that we had driven right past them and left them behind, and as we investigated further, it was one of our door-to-door vehicles that had passed them, which they probably discovered a minute or two later. But that's one, one of the primary reasons for shifting to a different color. And we, we have a unique service in Cary, different than the other paratransit services for Go Triangle, Go Raleigh, or Go Durham, and that was the thinking behind sticking to our door-to-door, which our customers are familiar with, still embracing the new overall umbrella of the Go Cary. So staff recommends council approve the new Go Cary door-to-door vehicle and services brand for our paratransit services, also effective on October 1, 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Boilston. Questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a motion?
Sorry.
Well, no, she made a motion.
Can I get a second?
Wait, you have to say which option.
His, count the, the staff recommendation of door-to-door.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Kent, uh, Mr. George.
I'm trying to understand why there's a Cary Access is two ways, uppercase and lowercase.
Well, that's the...
That's a good question, that was...
Door-to-door is only shown as all uppercase, I was just trying to get a feel for why you're...
That was the design that was provided to us by Go Triangle staff that developed this.
They show both?
They showed both.
They print both?
We could easily have, although it was not shown on the door-to-door, we could easily go to a lowercase on door-to-door, keep it just like...
No, I just was trying to be consistent, I like consistency, but I just, I was, no, I just was wondering.
In addition to the clarity when the buses go by, I, I've spoken at many senior centers, they don't know we have door-to-door service, and it's nice, I think it's advertising when the buses go by and say "door-to-door" on them. Maybe that'll help them understand we have door-to-door. I think option two is the way to go.
My only comment, Mr. Boilston, thank you for all your work on this, you always do a great job and whatnot, but whoever came up with the logo is terrible. It's like, and I've looked at every city, the Go Raleigh, the Go everybody else, you know, and it's like, you got this Go, and you got this weird little thing that nobody knows what the heck it is, and then the city's name is like way off to the side. It's like, when you're, when you're trying to develop a brand and a logo, it's, it just makes no sense to me, so if you just pass that along, I'd really appreciate it.
Sure, well, thank you.
Other questions? Other questions or comments? We have a motion on the table to approve staff recommendation option two. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Boilston.
Thank you.
We'll move to our last discussion item, item 6.4, summary of recommendations from the Raleigh-Cary rail crossing study. Mr. Bray will present the item, and there is no action required of council this evening. Mr. Bray.
Good evening, council. For your consideration, staff is presenting a summary of the recommendations from the Raleigh-Cary rail crossing feasibility study. The project team for this study included representatives from the town of Cary and Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, the city of Raleigh, the North Carolina Rail Division, Go Triangle, the North Carolina Railroad, Norfolk Southern, and CSX. The purpose of the study was to evaluate potential crossing improvements on the North Carolina Railroad corridor from northeast Maynard Road in Cary to Gorman Street in Raleigh, and study how changes to the crossings will affect future land use and the community. A core leadership team was established to guide the study with representatives from the members of the project team. Kickoff meetings were held in November 2014, and a design charrette to discuss land use and recommended improvements was held approximately one year ago. There are two recommended crossing improvements in Cary. The first is a railroad bridge over northeast Maynard Road that would shift the Maynard Road-Chatham Street intersection south to outside of the 200-foot railroad corridor. Here's a rendering showing the recommendations for Maynard Road, and we can come back to these in one second. The second recommendation in Cary is a Trinity Road bridge over the railroad and over Chatham as well, with a new location north to existing Trinity Road and south to Cary Town Boulevard. Here's that rendering as well. It's important to note that there is currently no funding for design or construction for any of the study recommendations. So staff recommends council accept the report as information. Individual recommendations will be brought back to council by staff for action as needed, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. Questions?
No.
No questions? Thank you, Ms. Bray.
Thank you, council.
Did you hear that?
We do not have a closed session tonight, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Yes, a second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion's unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you.[1716.65]